...I like to call the January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, PCOS and City's School Board Meeting to order. Right. Elizabeth Miles will lead us in the pledge. Elizabeth is a sophomore at the PCOS High School.
She's a member of FCA, FCCLA, and International Club. She is on the PHS teams for winter track, spring track, and cross-country. Elizabeth is also a volunteer at Riverside Hospital in the acute care of elderly section.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mario Torres will provide the inspirational reading. Mario is a sophomore at PHS whose passion is band. He has been in band now for five years and really enjoys the Islander Marching Band. He likes to stay involved with school functions and events in the community. He has volunteered for the natural disaster simulation for C E R T. Mario enjoys baseball, basketball, painting, spending time with family and friends. He is also involved in student-to-student and enjoys assisting new students.
I found four quotes, and this first quote is, "The difference between school and life is, school, you are taught a lesson and then given a test; in life, you are given a test that teaches you a lesson." And this was said by Tom Bonnet. My second quote is, "Aim for success, not perfection. Never give up your right to be wrong, because then you will be lost, you will lose the ability to learn new things and more, and move forward with your life." Remember that fear always lurks behind perfectionism. My third quote is, "The aim of education should be to teach us rather than how to think, than what to think, rather to improve our minds so as to enable us to think for ourselves, than to load the memory with thoughts of our other men." Bill Boett said this. My final quote for tonight is, "Everybody is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it is stupid." And this was said by Albert Einstein.
Great job, Libby and Mario. Ms. Rollins, would you introduce the students?
Certainly. This evening's presentation will be on the PCOS and High School Stock Market Club. This is a new club to PHS with Cameron Ross, a senior, speaking on who they are, mission, goals, accomplishments, and plan. When Cameron's presentation is complete, please stay around, and after a couple more items, we'll take a break and talk with everyone and, yeah.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Cameron Ross, and it's an honor to be presenting to you guys the PCOS and High School Stock Market Club. So before we begin, I thought I'd kind of tell you guys my story, like why, what inspired me to start the Stock Market Club. Hurricane Isabel kind of left my family in a state of financial ruin, and we still feel the effects of it today. To this day, I've kind of, over time, I wanted to learn everything I could on business, investing, anything at all, to achieve financial independence, to never go through this again for my family. So over the past decade, fifteen years, I accumulated a wealth of knowledge, and now I wish to spread that with my fellow classmates. Thus, the PCOS and High School Stock Market Club was born. So who we are? We're high school freshmen, seniors, anyone can join. We're interested in finance and future wealth, and we're involved, community members, and active student body. What we do, we analyze the stocks and market. We apply methods and algorithms to simulated trading, mainly competitions. We compete in DECA and Capitol Hill Stock Market Challenge. We increase awareness there for opportunity in the financial realm as a possible career choice. And we teach beyond the educational curriculum on the stock market, banking, investment, and economy, and we plan and prepare for financial independence. So an example of what we do for technical analysis is, if you see in the top, it's the RSI. That's an index. It's called the Relative Strength Index. So basically, what it means when it dips below that thirty line, that's an oversold level. When it goes above the seventy line, that means it's overbought. Basically, those are entry and exit points in a stock, wanting to buy and sell. Along with that, we have, we use other oscillators, indicators, and indexes to further our stock So some of our organizational goals, we want to increase financial knowledge and literacy. We want to understand fundamental and technical analysis of stock, and we want to win scholarships in simulated competitions for the school and students. Network in an influential industry our economy revolves around. And lastly, we wish to apply the knowledge for further prosperity beyond the classroom, beyond high school and college. So some of the opportunities we'd like to create is connect with like-minded individuals in the school. Like to engage in social, oh, I'm sorry, engage in school-associated competitions to display our knowledge, and we learn skills and smart money knowledge for future application. We'd like to meet accredited guest speakers with financial success in particular industries and local businesses and such, and be prepared for real-world financial situations. So some of the accomplishments we've achieved over our club's short lifespan is, we've achieved a sustained rank to compete in DECA's ICDC National Event. We placed in the top twenty-five out of seven hundred and twenty-three teams in the largest Southeast Division. We've taught financial literacy beyond the classroom, and we spread knowledge essential for building financial wealth. So this is the home screen of the DECA Stock Market Challenge page. So what it is, it's a competition. You start with a hundred thousand dollars simulated money. From there, you have to build a portfolio of stocks, bonds, and mutual funds. Over the course of a two-month span, I have increased this value of a hundred thousand dollars to over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so I can show you that it works, and I can spread this and help others gain financial knowledge in the industry. So this is my account holdings for the past two months, and basically, what you can see is it's over ninety-three percent stock, and we chose this for an aggressive portfolio for accelerated growth with a short timeframe, thus giving us returns of over seventy percent. So we were recently invited to compete in SIFMA's Capitol Hill Challenge, which is an invitation-only event. You have to apply through our invitation, and basically, you place in the top three in this national event, and you get to go to DC, you get scholarships and award, and you get to meet Warren Buffett. So our mission in our club over the next year is to erudite the financial unknown. We'd like to enlighten what our world essentially revolves around, and we'd like to teach money management, allocation, and long-term financial preparation. Explore possible career, business, or investment opportunities presented to members, and we'd like to leave a purpose beyond the classroom. So for future growth, I would like to see for our club is, I would like to bring in guest speakers from local businesses or financial management and, you know, apply more knowledge than I can teach. I like to compete in Ithaca Simulated Hundred Thousand Dollar Challenge for the school and student. I like to breed a DECA line of ICDC competitors in the Stock Market Challenge and place in SIFMA's Capitol Hill for students and scholarship awards. I like to give back to the community at the end of everything, and I like to achieve financial independence myself. Thank you for your time, and I hope you enjoy my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Parrish, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We have none this evening.
Well, let's move on to recognitions.
Great. As Chairman Cass moves over to the podium, we'd first like to invite our Volunteer of the Month, and this month, we have Ms. Tracy Allman, who's the Volunteer of the Month for PCOS and High School. Tracy has been a volunteer for the Band Boosters at PCOS and High School since her son Gerald joined the program as a freshman last year. Some individuals stand out for their great qualities, and Mrs. Allman is one of those people. She is well-known for her work ethic, positive teamwork, attitude, and leadership. She is well-respected throughout the Band Boosters and the PCOS and High School community for being the go-to person to get things done. She is a positive, motivated parent with an amazing potential to help any organization. This year, she played an important role as vice president in charge of concessions for the Band Boosters. I can't begin to tell you the number of hours she has donated to the program, ordering and stocking food and drinks, getting other parents to work in the concession stands at the Friday night home football games. If any of you have ever been to the Friday night football games, you know the amount of work that goes into the concession stand. What is even more amazing about Mrs. Allman is that she is also serving as president of the PCOS and High School PTO at the same time she is volunteering with the band. On top of these two volunteer positions, she's a great mom and a real professional. Due to her great attitude and dedication to the students of PCOS and High School, we want to congratulate Mrs. Tracy Allman as a January Volunteer of the Month. Please join me in congratulating her. We'd like to bring forward our Senior of the Month, Mariah Hanson. PCOS and High School January Student of the Month is Mariah Hanson. Mariah is an exceptional student, taking multiple advanced placement courses at the top of her class at PHS. She is a member of the Mu Alpha Theta, French Honor Society, Tri-M Society, National Honor Society, and a member of the PCOS and High School Islander Marching Band, where she is currently a drum major. She has been in jazz choir for two years, and this year, she joined the high school show choir, Evolution. She shows her support for her school by her membership in the key club, student-to-student, and special friends. After high school, Mariah plans to major in music education at either Shenandoah University or James Madison University. Please join me in congratulating Mariah Hanson as our Senior of the Month.
Okay, now, we are going to take a short break and visit with you.
What do you want us to remember?
In the area of plant operations, in addition to numerous annual large preventive maintenance projects that we do every year during that time, plant maintenance undertook and worked with contractors to get a myriad of things completed. Among those were the capital improvement project at PHS for the rooftop air conditioning and ventilation system. All of that work was completed over the break. The PPS Capital Improvement Plan, while it's not complete, we started one phase of that and mentioned it in December, that each teacher, each room's air handler would have a switch that the teachers could operate so that they could control whether they were or weren't getting airflow at the time. That was completed over the break, and the teachers have responded very favorably. At the middle school, a section of sidewalk, which had always been both high-traffic and flooded whenever there was rain, was removed, replaced, and now the drainage is appropriate and people will be dry. And last but not least, maintenance did a great job of removing the snow even before the weather helped. And that concludes my operation.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Papas? Mr. Papas, hold on one second. I've been asked, if I would ask you this on camera, that the folks want to know about the track completion.
They do. The track completion is comprised of numerous phases. The first of which was to ameliorate all of the growth that had happened and encroached on the edge of the tracks, and that was done in the fall. We were supposed to have had new asphalt laid on top of the track after we took borings to make sure it could support all the weight and whatnot, but as you know, it's been a monsoon since December. Consequently, we can't get big vehicles out there. As soon as the ground firms up, the trucks will roll out there. Then, at the culmination of this year's track practice and track season, will come out first thing in the summer, as soon as school is over and the surface will be applied.
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Reimers, do we have any... I'm sorry, I always want to skip Dr. Fox. I don't know why. And I hate to say it's my favorite report, so I shouldn't skip you.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Good evening, Chairman Cass, board members, and Dr. Parrish. My instructional update for you this evening will just go over a few of our Program of Study changes that we discussed in our work session last month, and I'll bring to you a little bit of data from our career and technical ed program. So just a review of our Program of Studies. The committee met in October and November, and we've listed there for you who was on that committee. The committee makes revisions, additions, and deletions for your approval. The proposed changes were shared with you, as I stated, at the work session in December, and tonight we will have a vote for you on the acceptance of those proposed changes. We've listed for you the additions, just as a reminder, to the Program of Studies at the high school level, those new courses that will be added to the Program of Study, and the middle school level Foundations of Algebra Part II Honors course that we're proposing to add as well. And again, we went through each of these at the December work session. Another part of our Program of Studies is our grade point average calculation, and we also spent some time in December at the work session reviewing this information with you. So just as a quick review, the committee received input from the high school administrators, the school counselors, the high school leadership team, and the faculty, and there are four recommendations for your approval tonight. The first is that we wait honors-level courses and foreign language courses at levels four and five. And then we assign quality points to the grades, and we've listed a chart there just to remind you what those quality points are. So you'll now have, if you earn an A in an AP course, you'll get five quality points. If you earn an A in an honors-level course, you'll get 4.5 points. And in a standard-level course, an A will be worth four points. Those two recommendations, we're proposing that they begin with the freshman class entering Pecosa High School in 2017-18. So that'll be next year's freshman class, and then it'll work its way up. The third recommendation was that we remove the GPA cap that was established many years ago, and that one we can go ahead and implement next year with the juniors, the current juniors, sophomore, and freshman class. We can remove that cap for them right away. And then the final recommendation is that we actually calculate the GPA using an average method. And again, there's the formula for you, just to remind you, excuse me, the average method of what we're proposing. And that would not be able to go into effect, again, with the freshman class of 2017-18, just to be fair across the board, and that will be one of the points that we make sure that we communicate to parents and to teachers as to why that is, that it won't be able to start immediately for some students, because that's probably the biggest concern. Our timeline, just to give you a heads-up of where we're going, if everything is approved this evening, we will publish the Program of Studies online. We will make some paper copies of it that will be available, but we do post it immediately online. February registration begins, believe it or not, with counselors and students and parents for next year. The Rising Sixth Grade Parent Information Meeting at Pecosa Middle School will be held on Monday, February 13th at 6:00, and our Rising Freshman Parent Information Night at Pecosa High School will be Wednesday, February 1st at 6:00. So that's just a very quick, short summary of what we talked about in December. I'd like to switch gears for just a minute and give you a little bit of data very quickly about our CTE courses. This first slide just shows you our enrollment that we've had over the past three years in our classes, and you'll see that slight decline last year, and that's the same decline that we've seen in enrollment across the division. So it's not alarming, it's in trend with what we're seeing across the division. In terms of industry certifications, last year, students earned 228 industry certifications, and these are recognized by trade and professional associations, and they validate the essential skills that are needed in a particular occupation. So for example, students have taken the National Retail Federation Certification and Customer Service exams, the Auto Certification User Exam, American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Early Childhood Education Exam, the WISE Financial Literacy, and the ETS Para Pro Exam. Additionally, students at the New Horizons programs took the EMT exam, dental assisting national board exams, the Virginia Department of Fire Program's firefighter level-one exam. We also have students who took the EPA HVAC Technician Exam and a firefighter-two certification exam. So lots of students doing great things. We also have a couple of students who earned state licensure. So this is kind of a big deal. We have six students who earned their cosmetology licensure out of high school, and that's typically an 18-month to 24-month program that students would undertake at their own expense, so they've come out with a state licensure in cosmetology. So we're looking, obviously, to expand those numbers as well. Workplace Readiness Skills Assessment for the Commonwealth was developed by the Virginia Department of Education in collaboration with several organizations as a means for evaluating workplace readiness skills embedded in all state-approved CTE courses. So as you can see, we've had a big jump in those numbers, and we expect to see a big jump in those numbers again, because more and more students are taking that exam as they progress through their CTE courses and programs. The National Occupational Competency Testing, or NOCTI as it's called, is a national standardized assessment of skills and knowledge in specific career and technical areas, and we had students who took those exams in architectural drafting assessment and the welding assessment. So again, they're coming out with skills that are... they're immediately employable with. And finally, we have for you that overall, we have 350 students who earned CTE credentials during the 2015-16 school year. And again, you'll see a slight decline from the year before, but what I think is important to notice is if you look at the bottom and if you can see those percentages, those are the percentage of CTE students who took exams, so you'll see that number's increasing, and that's what we want to see. So while we had a little dip in the number of certifications because of enrollment, we are seeing more students taking more credentialing exams in our programs. So that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Fox? Impressive, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Ms. Whitaker, could you lead us in the consent agenda, please?
Absolutely. There were five items on the consent agenda tonight. The first four were enclosed in the packet of information. The first item, approval of financial reports. Second item, approval of personnel action. Third item, authorization to change appropriation in accordance with attached request. The fourth item was approval of minutes of December, regular meeting and work. The fifth and final item on the consent agenda is approval of the staff as representative on the NHRE Board for the remainder of the 2016-2017.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Much any questions or comments? Reimers.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Scheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Scheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Scheeler?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Other matters, move into matter A, consideration of approval of Pecosa City Public Schools' Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 18 to '22. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought this forward to you at your work session in December and had a thorough discussion about it. We are showing this on the screen, so community members watching us on TV can see the actual proposed CIP. What this does is this enables us to demonstrate the need we have in terms of the facility needs that we have in the coming years. You will notice here on the plan that the need for roof replacements at the primary school sections over the course of several different years. I'm going to skip down to the high school where you see the roof replacement there, both... and you see gym HVAC for $180,000. We are bringing forward in this proposal that we move that up by a couple of years because it's something that the community does continue to have discussion about in terms of a need. And then you see across the bottom your division-wide bus replacement schedule. The now-approved state replacement schedule is a bus replacement every 15 years, but we still have buses that are far older than that on the roads. I've moved past the middle school section of the CIP because several years ago, we did begin discussions with city council about potentially renovating that school. We had a facility study done. I do believe, after we get the new council seated for a little bit and up to speed, I suspect that we're going to see you, all board members and the city council members, start to talk about when we realistically might be able to move forward with some type of renovation and what option it is that we might recommend. So we haven't put that as a dollar value in there. Clearly, the roof replacement listed under the... would take... would be part of the actual renovation of the school, but we've kept that separately. I think it's done to that school. We will definitely have to replace a roof. Everybody who owns a house knows at some point you've got to replace your roof, and that comes as usually a big ticket item, and that's true for the schools as you see in the CIP. So we're recommending this evening the approval of the CIP so that the community knows, once it is approved by you, it is sent forward to the city incorporated in the city CIP that's then brought forward to city council. So it's still early stages, and we did, as Mr. Papas discussed earlier this evening, we actually have three projects approved and funded as part of our CIP last year that we're working on. So we are still continuing to be very pleased to have that experience. So with that said, I recommend approval of the CIP as proposed this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Do we have a motion for approval of the CIP?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ms. Reimers.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Okay, consideration of approval of the Program of Studies for 2017-18. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we again discussed this at your work session in December, and I think Dr. Fox did a wonderful job of sharing that information with you in presentation. So we are bringing forward to you the Program of Studies as proposed, which does include the course changes as well as the change to the GPA calculation. I do want to make sure that I mentioned there does... this does come with a bit of a cost as we move through the budget process. We hope that we're going to be able to have the funds needed for some of those new courses we're putting in there, but certainly we'll be discussing that. But we want to get it in the Program of Studies to, first of all, make sure we have student interest for them. So with that said, I recommend approval of the secondary school program of studies as presented this evening for the 17-18 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Do we have a motion for approval?
Seven.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes six years.
Okay, consideration of approval of requests for an extended field trip to the Czech Republic. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we continue to have a partnership with the school over in the Czech Republic. Students from that school come to us in the fall, and then students from our high school travel over there in the spring during spring break. It does not come at a cost for the school division, the students do pay their way over there, but in light of the fact that it is an international field trip, we do ask that you approve that this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the Czech Republic field trip? Do we have a second? Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
I can tell you that we do get daily emails from over there, so we know, so you can always check in with me, but I absolutely understand that, and certainly if something were to happen in the world just prior to that, we might change our decision on this, but we do keep in regular contact, so... I'll try and be equally as reassuring this year.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish.
You're welcome.
And just so you know, if you're not sleeping well, you can call Gail in the middle of the night.
Call Gail, absolutely.
Ms. Reimers.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Scheeler?
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 Aye.
Ms. Scheeler?